To the City of Kingman Planning and Zoning Commission.
Call to order.
Call to order and roll call.
Chair Goss.
Present.
Commissioner Sixta. Commissioner Noble. Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Swop.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Present.
And then Commissioner Sarkisian is excused.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can all be seated. All right, we are going to start with the consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any comments? No? All right, I see none. Let's go to new business. First, we need to start out with the oath of office. New commission members for this term are myself, Elizabeth Goss, Deborah Sixta, and Scott McCoy.
Yes, all of the new commissioners were given the oath of office and they have been signed.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the appointment of chairperson and vice-chairperson for 2025. At the beginning of each year, the commission needs to choose a chairperson and vice-chairperson. That is just for discussion amongst ourselves, so I will open that for discussion.
I think you've been doing a fine job, Chair Goss. And I'd like for you to take the heat and retain that role. So if you put yourself forward, I'll vote for you.
All right.
I was going to say the same thing. I'll second that.
All right, do we have any other comments on that one? Okay, well then, I guess I'll put that to a vote. Do we have a motion for that? Do you want to make a motion?
I move that we retain Chair Goss as our chair for our commission.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do you want to take a roll call vote?
Chair Goss.
Approve.
Commissioner Sixta.
Yes.
Commissioner Noble.
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Swop.
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters.
Approve.
All right, well, I guess that makes me the chair, so I will continue. Okay, so now we need to have a vice-chair. Who is interested in that role?
If I may approach a comment, I would like to put forward Chair Swop. Just because you have so many kids and you still come every weekend, I think you're taking a lot on. You might as well take some more. I'd like to suggest that you run, so that's up to you.
Second.
What do you think, Jen? Are you interested?
Yes, I'm willing to do that.
All right. Do you have any more discussion on that? Nope. All right, do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah. Chair Goss.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sixta.
Yes.
Commissioner Noble.
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Swop.
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters.
Yes.
All right, we have a chair and a vice-chair then. We can jump to the third, which is open meeting law and parliamentary procedure training. The city attorney will provide the annual open meeting law and parliamentary procedure training to the commission members.
So that'll be me. I think most of you know I'm Carl Cooper. I'm the city attorney. This is something we're going to do with all the boards and commissions, the first meeting of the year. Just make sure everybody goes through this training. I'll try and keep it real quick because you've all been through it before at some point in time or another. I've always been continually reminded to remind you folks that the microphones are sometimes difficult to or don't always pick up what we're saying. So we just need to talk into the microphone, make sure it's on, and we kind of make everybody happy. So next slide, please. Joel. All right, so basically, the open meeting law is just talking about how we need to make sure that there's transparency in the actions that we do and all of the government's business needs to be done in public in these types of meetings. I'm not going to read this. I don't know if you have copies. If you have copies, great. You do have copies, so you can always go through it. But it hasn't changed since the last time you've been through this training. So just, we always want to make sure that we're doing as much as we can in public according to the statute. Next. So you are part of the public body, and again, all this is supposed to be conducted in public. Next. This is done to protect and preserve the rights of the individuals that we have here to participate in government. Definitely, it protects the integrity and the transparency and builds that trust between the government and the citizens. Next. As I say, you must comply. You're part of the public body. Next. A meeting, this is one that sometimes confuses people, but it's any point in time when you have a quorum. And I know the next slide talks about a quorum, but a quorum is four of you. If four of you communicate information, no matter how you do it, you're starting a meeting. So just want to be careful. The next slide, I think defines what a quorum is. Go to the next one. This is how a meeting, a meeting is basically that sending or sharing information that could potentially or is going to be on the agenda to discuss. And it could be any of these matters or any of these ways. Some people don't think about social media, but if someone posts a comment on social media says, hey, this item is coming up to see us next month, and I'm going to vote for it. And then three of you guys decide, hey, I'm going to comment on that and say I support it, and I'm going to vote there too. That's an open meeting law violation. So we just want to avoid that. You just want to be careful about what you communicate and how you communicate. Next. Splintering the quorum is basically that communication that goes, two people talk, and then one of those two people goes and talks to somebody else, they talk to somebody else. Splintering the quorum, it's basically relaying or sharing that information. That's starting at less than a quorum, but you build that quorum body by sharing that information. So you always want to be careful about that. If someone tells you a position or what they want to do, don't share it with somebody else. If, you know, we're trying to avoid preordaining the discussion. Next. And if you have any questions, and I'm going fast, please stop me. Obviously, the information, the meeting can't take place without 24-hour notice to the public. That's to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, so they can be here in person or by watching it on YouTube. Next. Standard agenda stuff, it basically specifies what we're talking about, when we're talking about, and that information that allows the public to know, so they can decide whether they want to participate or not. Next slide. This is the big one. If it's not on the agenda, you can't talk about it. And you'll see me in council meetings or in some of these board or commission meetings just saying, hey, let's turn it back to the specific discussion item we're looking at. Sometimes people take a roundabout way to get what they want to communicate. And the chairperson or me or some of the staff, we don't always know where you're going. So if you think you're deviating, bring yourself back. Any of these interested parties, we can always try and direct you back to the point. But try and stick to the topic, because if you're talking about something that's not on the agenda or that would, that could possibly be something that's addressed later, you could create an open meeting law violation and any of the actions could be declared null and void by the AG's office. Next. Call the public. It's not something that's required, but we do calls the public. And that's just basically, we open it up, someone wants to come up and talk about something that's on their mind, that's basically related to P and Z or whatever. Just trying to keep it within the jurisdiction of each of the commissions. Next. The call to public, you're all aware of it. Sometimes the public's not aware of it. You don't get to respond. You don't get to engage. It's not a discussion. So the only time you're really going to respond is if someone criticizes you. At the call to public, you could respond to that. I recommend you don't respond to these types of things. Just let it roll off your back. And it usually needs to be something serious. But generally, your response is you're having staff look at it later, put it back on the agenda, or just sit there and just listen. Next. The public has a right, as it says, to listen, attend, videotape, record, only speak at public hearings or call the public, but they don't have a right to disrupt. So if they're disruptive, then we can deal with that later. And if you get somebody that's super disruptive and they're not listening to what you're trying to do, you recess the meeting, go in the back, chill out. If we need to get law enforcement to come in and deal with it, we can always do that. But that doesn't happen. I don't think I've seen that happen here. Or if it has, maybe once or twice. Next. Sanctions for violating the open meeting law. The courts can impose a civil penalty. You would be responsible for that civil penalty on your own. It's not something the city covers. But generally, with an open meeting law violation, what will happen is someone makes a report or a complaint to the Attorney General's office, the Attorney General informs me of that complaint, and I can respond to it saying, yeah, you're right, we made a mistake. Or we don't think we made a mistake, and this is why we don't think we made a mistake. Generally, what you're looking at is if there's some kind of violation, it's an educational thing. So what it would mean is if we did something, we made a mistake, we correct whatever action we may need to correct. But I would come here and give this report all over again. It's education. If you do something that's intentional and super bad, but I can't think of, that would be a different story. You could be kicked out of your office. Next. Conflict of interest, this is something that's very serious. We need to take consideration of this, especially with what you guys are doing. It's not a bad word. It just means that you have some interest in some activity that's before the commission. If you have a conflict, just declare that you have the conflict. You fill out some paperwork that the city clerk has. If you're not sure, you can always call me. You can call the clerks, and we can talk about it. In a conflict, basically, go to the next one. And it's basically going to be money, or it's going to be some kind of pecuniary interest or proprietary interest, which is, it benefits you that maybe in employment actions or something along that line. But make sure, just if you're not sure, sometimes it's best just to step back anyways. But definitely come and talk to us. We can sort it out. There's a comment here about providing good services, equipment to the municipality. As a government official, you can't provide goods or these types of services to the city unless it's been done through a competitive public bidding process. And that's come up a few times that we've had to deal with. And it's not a problem. It's just something we have to deal with. And that's to prevent some kind of favoritism. The conflict of interests, you have what are substantial and remote. And a remote interest is kind of the exception. So we'll go to the next slide. I'm not going to go through all these. There's two pages of this. I just want to make sure you guys have it. You can read through those and see what those remote interests are. And if you have a question about that, we can deal with it another time. It's a little complicated trying to describe it in this meeting. Next slide shows the next grouping of them. And these basically kind of cover most of the situations that you're going to run into. These are the statutes involving the conflict of interest, and please contact the clerks or my office. Next slide. We're going to talk about basic parliamentary procedure, just rules to conduct the meeting. We don't follow Robert's Rules of Order, so some people who use that get confused because we're much more relaxed. I think Robert's Rules of Order is overly complicated, and it's meant to stifle, in my mind, it's meant to stifle the discussion. So ours is much more simpler to deal with, and it facilitates that transparency you need with the citizens and you guys. Next. Basic thing is you got motions. You all know what motions are. There's three types. Well, there are more than three types. There's the three basic motions. You deal with the main motion, I move to approve something. Subsidiary motions are changing. I want to amend the original motion. And then you have incidental motions that'd be called to order. Points of privilege, those sorts of things. I'm not going to go into that. It just starts to get overly complicated when we start doing too many of these things. But we can always do that if we need to. Always obtain the floor from the chairperson. When you make the motion, make sure it's nice and clear. The chairperson should respond by repeating that motion, as everybody knows it is. You always want to have your second. After you get the second, then you restate it. The chairperson calls for a second. Next slide. Sorry, I'm going a little out of order. If there's no second, obviously, that motion dies. The chairperson will restate the motion. You can discuss what's on. You can discuss the motion. Generally, that's what happens when, once you've made that motion, you have that discussion about, I'm going to vote for it this way. I'm not going to vote for it this way. I have some questions. Obviously, that's the point. You can expand some questions on the motion, make some amendments to it. And then you just put the question, you know, are you ready to vote? And then you vote. Next slide. Basically, just parliamentary procedure helps keep the product, helps keep the meeting moving closely or proceeding properly. Make sure you speak clearly and concisely. Something I'm not doing very well. And obey the rules of debate. And as it says, always be courteous. I think I've never seen anybody not be courteous, but respect everybody, the participants, and you folks and the staff, and everything moves along quite quickly. I think that's it. Any questions? I know it's fast, but it's boring.
Chair, I do have a question.
Sure.
Counsel, occasionally I get approached by developers, usually somebody that's invested in one of these items, and they want to talk privately. You know, I always just have like a blanket. I don't engage in, you know, ex-party communication. Like, what's the best approach for handling that?
So there's different levels of when that has to come into play. So what you're kind of talking about is basically someone coming lobbying you for your position. Phil, if you don't want to talk to them, you don't have to talk to them. You can get all your information at the meeting. If you want to talk to them and have them provide you some information, that's great. I would try and refrain from committing to anything, and I would try to refrain from saying what your position is. Because what could happen, if you tell them what your position is, then they go to another person, and then they're going to try and get all those commitments upfront. And that could be, you know, splintering the quorum, could be creating a serial committee or a serial meeting. So we want to avoid that as much as possible. But if you feel the desire to talk to them, I think it's okay. Just be very careful about how far you go into it. If we were, I'm going to expand way too much. If we were in a quasi-judicial type of situation, such as the Board of Adjustment or Board of Appeals, you're not supposed to engage in that kind of discussion, because you're getting basically evidence presented to you. And as a Board of Adjustment or Appeals, you're in this judicial position where you're ruling on a situation, and the information you're ruling on needs to be what's been presented in the meeting itself.
Okay. Thank you.
So too much information, but there you go.
But it helps. Thank you.
Do we have any more questions?
Chair, if I can ask a confirming question. Carl, staff will send out emails at times, and we'll send it out to the entire commission. I'm very careful about the reply all.
I had that in my notes to say something, and I did not.
Thank you.
So don't reply to all. Basically, generally, your response might, if you reply to all, it could be, hey, I'll be at the meeting, or got it, great information. Don't reply to all. Just hit, if you're going to reply, just hit the reply to the individual. That way, your response isn't going to everybody. Because if you put something that could be a commitment to something, that may, again, create some kind of a violation of the open meeting law. So just be careful. It happens, but we try to avoid it.
Thank you. All right, I think we're good. Thanks so much.
Yep.
All right, the next thing that we have is a conditional use permit, CUP 24-0006. This is a conditional use permit application to facilitate the establishment of a 51,600-square-foot climate-controlled self-storage facility on 1.32 acres located approximately 300 feet south of the Walupi Mountain Road and east of Mission Boulevard in the community business C2 Zone, Walupi Mountain Road, C2 HMR overlay. County Assessor Parcel Number 321-06-085. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Goss. Missures. For you tonight is conditional use permit, CUP 24-0006. And this is an application on behalf of Angle Homes for a mini-storage facility. This particular project is located in the C2 HMR, the Walupi Mountain Road Overlay District. Sits on approximately 1.32 acres. Just a little bit of site history. This particular property was initially incorporated into the C2 HMR zoning with an amendment that was done back in 2013. Then, subsequent to that, in 2014, the property changed, was rezoned from R110 to the C2 designation, and then was ultimately split into its current configuration also in 2014. Before you tonight, really is a use-only permit. So the site plan is subject to administrative-type action that the staff would be looking at, or administrative-type action that staff would be looking at through the process when they submit their formal site plan. However, what they have submitted is their conceptual site plan, along with their elevation arrangements, which we'll go over this evening, in support of their use only for the CUP. So as stated in the project description, this project is located over near off of Mission Boulevard. It is just south of Walupi Mountain Road. The property is designated C2 HMR overlay. And as shown with, on this particular slide, it is the property that has the star on it. The property itself did ask for a waiver on the citizen review process, which was still in effect at the time that this application was started. Due to the few number of property owners in the area, within the 300-foot area, that particular requirement was waived in accordance with the municipal code. Notice of public hearing was presented. We mailed out notifications to the property owners within 300 feet. We've published within the Kingman Daily Miner, as well as posted a sign on the project site. As of the preparation of the staff report, and as of today, staff has not received any comments regarding this proposal. In general, the engineering departments, our internal departments, engineering, fire, as well as our city building department and city surveying, all have reviewed the conceptual site plans. Comments are incorporated within the conditions of approval that will be presented in your staff reports. And for site plan purposes, this is the conceptual site plan that was proposed by the applicant. As you can see, this is a 51,600-square-foot building outline. Sits on 1.32 acres. Parking in accordance to the code, they would be required to provide one parking space for every 50 dwelling, or for every 50 storage units. Requires them to have eight parking spaces plus two for their manager's unit. The site is providing 16 spaces. There is landscaping proposed within the project site that will also serve as their retention area. And again, this will all be reviewed through the city's site plan review process. The applicant has provided this conceptual plan. It has a multitude of different architectural styles and materials that are being proposed on it. Detailed materials will forthcoming, again, in the site plan review. So for you tonight, in order to deem this particular application and to move it forward for a recommendation of approval, staff has demonstrated that the proposal is consistent with the C2 HMR designation. It's consistent with the general plan itself. It is also, does not create any public health, safety, or welfare issues. This proposed use would not be deemed a nuisance. It is located within a commercial designation. Materials that are typically in storage facilities are regulated by the applicant or the owner of the storage facility, as well as through the building code. With that being said, lastly, storage facilities create very little traffic. So with respect to the location, we don't deem that these would be any concerns that are being presented for you this evening. In general, the site has demonstrated that it actually can meet the lot coverage, parking intervals between driveways. It has setbacks that are greater than required. There are zero setbacks that are required for this project site. It is not adjacent to residential zoning or residential use. It has adequate access and circulation around the building and from Mission Boulevard. And again, it is providing open space on the site, which will serve as its retention basins. No noise, light, or visual impacts. The site would be required to adhere to all the city standards when it comes to lighting, landscaping, as well as the architectural landscaping and screening for the site. All of that will be reviewed through the ministerial process with the site plan. There are no impact on public utilities. Stealth storage facilities have very little demand on any of our public services, as well as public water or sewer. Again, signage and lighting will also be reviewed, again, through the site plan review process. The applicant, at that time, will also be required to dedicate and improve any of the right-of-way that the project site fronts. And again, no impact on any resources. It's not a historic, prehistoric site. No natural resources on the subject property. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit 24-0006, affirming the findings contained in the staff report and the conditions of approval, 1 through 14. One thing that should be noted, as you may recall, we did a zone text amendment, where CUPs would then be going on to the council for their approval as they came before you in the future. This particular application was actually started and was noticed in advance prior to the change in that ordinance. So the approval body would be the Planning and Zoning Commission for this application tonight. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody have any questions?
Chair, Jason, where in relation to the Walupi Quick Stop is this? Because I know they have some, they have some storage in this general area, right? Is it right down the road or?
There is storage in the general area. I believe this is actually further to the east in this particular situation. And I know that there is another application that is pending for additional storage in the area.
Thank you. You had a neighborhood, you didn't have the neighborhood review, but you did still post it, right?
We still did post the site, correct.
And there was nobody that came forward and complained?
That is correct. It was posted on-site for the public hearing. It was noticed for all the property owners within 300 feet. I believe that was six, six or seven property owners. And then we also posted it in the Kingman Daily Miner.
Okay. And just one more thing, in your slides, there was, I know we're not supposed to discuss the elevation right now. I just wanted to take a look at it really quick. So are those standard garage doors on the left-east elevation?
It looks like they're basically grade-level doors for exterior access for some of the storage opportunities. And then they'll have indoor climate-controlled storage as well.
Maybe 12 feet tall?
Yeah, again, that will be reviewed through the process. Anywhere from eight to 12 feet is typical for storage. And you normally get to 15 feet for, if it's for RV storage.
Looks like a lot of building right there. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, this item requires a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing if anybody has anything to say to us on that matter. Thank you. Just come up and state your name for us.
Certainly. I would also like to give you a brochure if I can. You can take a look at some pictures.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's been a while since I've been in front of this commission or any commission.
You need to state your name, please, sir.
I'm Robert Bennett. I'm the owner of DNL Storage, or Walupi Mountain Storage, on the corner of Roslyn and Walupi Mountain Road. I have been in conflict with the city of Kingman for a substantial amount of time, all the way up to the US Supreme Court, over my zoning on my storage units, because I wanted to expand my storage units. They changed the law. This commission voted and asked to change the law to allow a conditional use permit on that property. I agreed to that, because initially, I had storage units on that property. The city asked me to join the city. I agreed to that and signed papers agreeing to that with a verbal condition that there would be no adverse effects to my property. The first thing that happened with the city was they downgraded my zoning, took away my right to build storage units the minute I entered the city. They then continued their process and imposed a sales tax on me, which they also did not disclose. I have been an unhappy camper with the city of Kingman for a long time. The decision of the US Supreme Court and the state courts and the federal courts was that I had to go back into state court. They refused to address state issues, all the way up to the US Supreme Court. Now, the only reason you have conditional use Now, the only reason you have conditional use permits allowed on that property, on Walupi Mountain Storage, is because of the city's taking away my right to build storage units. At a later time, after I started trying to build those storage units, I was denied a cup three times in a row, conditional use permit. That's what resulted in the civil suit. I do not particularly have any affection for the Angles. They were ones that came out opposed to my storage units, because it affronts Boulder Creek Estates, where they were building. And I told them that I did not like that at the time, because I granted them free of charge, the right and easement across my property for the water rights to get to Boulder Creek Estates. I did that without being paid for. I'm a little pissed at the city continually from that standpoint, because when I originally bought that property, I bought the rights that were tunneled underneath Walupi Mountain Road. That cost $40,000, which was supposed to be refunded to me by the development of Boulder Creek Estates. The city outright, city staff, told me that they were not going to pay that $40,000, which should have been assessed to each property owner in the Boulder Creek Estates. Doug Angle benefited from that. The Angle industry benefited from that. The city benefited from that at my expense. I am not a happy camper with the city. I do not like this stuff. I have an application now in to rezone it, and I held off doing it for the last two years because my wife had Alzheimer's. And I decided to stay home and take care of her.
Chair.
I have.
Your time's up, but thank you for your input. We can probably address it better outside of the meeting, but.
There's no point in addressing it anywhere, because here's the facts. If I don't get my zoning, I'm going back into state court. And I know your attorney says I have no vested interest in it. I disagree. I have attorneys that disagree. And I don't give a damn anymore. I don't like this city government.
It's time to sit down.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to say? No? Alright, then I'm going to close public hearing and open it up for commission discussion.
I have a question.
Who do you have a question for?
So I went.
Is it a question for us, or a question for Jason?
For you.
For me? Okay. Thank you.
For us to discuss.
Okay.
The road, when I went to the property, the road, you turn right, and BLM is on the right, and then the strip mall's on the left, and then the storage facility is behind that. That, is that a road? Is it going to go all, is that part of Mission Boulevard? Is it going to be extended all the way to the other portion? I mean, is it going to be a connector road, an arterial road?
Okay, so that's a Jason question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm new.
Chair Goss, Commission Chairman Sixta, you're talking Mission Boulevard itself, or are we talking Washington?
The road that goes between the strip mall and BLM, and if you traverse south, then the storage facility will be on the right, behind the strip mall. And then, it appears apparently that the road ends, or does it keep on going through? Is that road going to be paved and access a part of Mission, or?
So Washington should be improved.
Essentially Washington.
Right. Washington, and they would be required to improve across their frontage.
Mm-hmm. It would?
Yes.
Will it connect behind, so south?
To connect to Mission itself, or for continuing south?
I'm sorry, I'm not privy to which road that, Mission Boulevard, yeah.
So this is Mission here where the cursor is?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, this would be designed as a, currently as a knuckle, but more than likely, depending on what type of development comes in here, Mission would, or Washington would continue to the south. We just don't have any development proposals before us right now.
Probably will now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Alright, what do you guys think?
This is discussion, right, Chair?
Yes.
Just observation, like, my, my, my problem with a lot of these stor, these storage facilities is usually when they're on our big roads, that, you know, the city's put millions of dollars into improving. And then we have something that uses one or two cars a week, you know, or, you know, really low. It just seems like it should be in an industrial area. That being said, this is off the beaten path. There's another storage facility down the street. I believe the gentleman that came up, it sounds like he wants to create a storage facility too, so he's not really arguing against it. Don't hear any public contempt for this project, so I don't really see a lot of friction with it. Just my own opinion.
I agree. So far, it looks like it fills all the conditions that we're looking for, so. Do we have any further discussion?
Chair, I also agree. It doesn't seem like it's very contentious. And I do express empathy towards the gentleman who came up and expressed his feelings about that as well. I appreciate his involvement.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Make the motion to approve conditional use permit CUP 24-0006.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Goss.
Approved.
Vice Chair Swab?
Yes.
Commissioner Sixta?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Alright, next we have the Bank Street Rezone. It is case number RZ24-0003. The city initiated requests to rezone approximately 16 acres from rural residential RR to commercial, community business C-2. Located on the east and west sides of Bank Street, south of the Gordon Drive, and north of Airway Avenue. County Assessor Parcel numbers 320-02-164A, a portion of 320-04-012A, and 320-04-064K. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Goss Commissioners, before you deny his rezone 24-003, and this is an application to rezone a majority of the properties that are located within this block on Bank Street, from rural residential to C2. As stated, this is an application that is being brought forth by the city's Development Services Department. This is in response to feedback that we had received from the city council and direction that we had received from the city council. There are various property owners associated with this particular rezone. The rezone encompasses approximately 16 acres across the entire corridor along Bank Street. The parcels that have the darker line drawn around them are the parcels that are in question that are being rezoned this evening. And this is just an aerial photo. As you can see, along the area of Bank Street, we have a church, there's an animal hospital, there's an office, there's another church or religious institution. So the corridor is developing as a commercial corridor or institutional uses, which are also compatible uses within the commercial designation. The existing zoning on the site spans anywhere from, we have some existing sites that are C3. Those are not being amended today. It's only the parcels that are residential that are being amended to the C2 designation. To demonstrate that we are in compliance with the general plan, this is the commercial corridor that's along Bank Street, and that is designated as regional commercial. There is a small pocket, again, that is public, and that's one of the churches is currently developed on that site. So before you this evening is the rezone, part of that is to demonstrate that it is compliant and consistent with the general plan, the 2040 general plan that is adopted. That is the case. The C2 does fit for the general commercial or the regional commercial land use designation. The rezone of the property is in the best interest of the public. It does not, does not create any safety or inconvenience concerns. It is in the best welfare of the city, as it continues to provide for much-needed commercial designations within the city for commercial opportunities, to help grow the city's businesses, as well as the economic development opportunities that continue to be presented for us. In general, location and size, again, this is a commercial corridor. The parcels are of sufficient size to accommodate commercial development. Commercial development is occurring already within the Bank Street corridor. So this will just continue to augment those particular properties, as well as the development that's occurring. Based on the findings that are in your staff report, the analysis that the staff has made regarding this particular area, we are recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the rezone to the mayor and city council. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jason.
Available to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I do. What's the current inventory of C2 that we have in Kingman already?
The current inventory, I don't have that answer off the top of my head for you. I can certainly get you what that inventory is. If you had asked me residential, I could have given you that one.
This proposal is based on need, or because of the development that's currently in place?
Bank Street was looked at as being a commercial corridor. So Bank Street is currently being built out for commercial purposes. So this, the direction was, was to come back and take a look at converting these parcels that are residential, which would really be incompatible with the commercial designation, especially the C3 designations that are already occurring on the site. Staff did recommend that we go with the C2 designation. It does allow for a lighter intensity of commercial. Once the commercial designation is established, should a particular operator seek to come forward and want something that's of more intensity, they could come back and seek their own rezone to C3.
And the properties immediately behind these proposed rezones are, is residential?
Residential, correct.
So the construction of block wall would be required?
That is correct.
That's not changed? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Jason?
Yes, Chair. Jason, we're probably not at the point to have like a traffic study or something, like an impact estimate of what the additional commercial would do, right?
Yeah, at this point, we wouldn't. I can tell you with the general plan, when the general plan was looked at and reviewed, it was looked at as a commercial corridor, which is why it already has the regional commercial designation on it. So from that perspective, we've looked at it internally, that it makes sense from a traffic standpoint. But as individual projects come in, if it were to warrant a traffic impact analysis, then one would be provided.
Okay, and the city is aware that the high school was on there with a school crossing, and potentially the new megachurch they have on the Journey Church or whatever. It sounds like they're putting a school in there or something.
I haven't seen anything specific to my.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I can say that in my business, as a commercial broker, it's, there's very few available commercial C2 lots available in the city, very few. And how much money did we spend putting the fiber optic and the gas and the water lines down Bank Street to make it? I know everybody thinks we're getting an Olive Garden, but not yet, maybe someday. But that's what that was designated for. That's why we did it. So, yeah, I think this is a great opportunity for the community and for Kingman.
Thank you. Alright, any more questions for Jason?
No.
Alright, I see none. Thank you so much. Alright, this item as well requires a public hearing, so I will open this up for public comment. If anybody wants to address the commission, please come forward and state your name? Nope? Alright, I'm going to close public hearing then, and open it up for commission discussion.
Chair Goss, I'll just broke your comment. You know, it seems like my whole life, the city's had plans for Bank Street, and it's just kind of floundered. Like, I would like to see something come of it, finally, you know? I am concerned about the crossings. My theory, my personal pet theory, was the cross, the school crossing basically nuked that as an alternate to Stockton Hill Road. It just seems dumb to put a 15-mile-an-hour, you know, school crossing on a major cross, crossroad. I don't see any plan to address that. And again, maybe staff or could take a close look at that sort of aspect of a traffic study. You know, there's, there's going to be a school crossing there, and maybe another one with Journey Church. Other than that, it seems like it lines right up with the plan that we just approved a few years ago, so I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and make sure if you want staff to look into that too, address it there at the end, so that they can make a big list.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Can I ask, does the commercial C2 designation, does that cross Gordon to the high school?
That's county.
Yeah, it does. The commercial, what we're talking about does.
I don't know what it is, but I know it's county is.
I don't think it does. I think when it hits Gordon and the cutoff between the county and the city, that it won't be in front of a school that I'm aware of when I drove out there.
Looking at the map, you're probably right.
Yeah. Let me, you know, just ask.
Do you want to ask anything to Jason? He's our whiz of all information and knowledge.
Does this C2 zoning, is it what they're asking for? Does it traverse north of Gordon?
Chair Goss, thank you. Commissioner Sixta, as you can see on this particular slide, there's a variation of different designations to the north within the county, to the northeast across Gordon. There's an agricultural residential designation. There is some C2 designation within it, as well as some rural residential and half-acre residential lots.
Can I discuss with him?
Oh, yeah, we, so we could talk amongst all of ourselves, and if we have a question for staff, then we just have to make sure that they come up. But that's Commissioner Waters down there at the end, and then Commissioner Swab next to you.
Commissioner Waters, when we, it's my understanding that when we put in the fiber optics and the larger lines and presented this as being commercial and invested that time and money to make that happen, I think right after that was 2008? That's right, when everything tanked. It wasn't because of anything that was or wasn't done by the city or anybody. It was globally, the whole, everything tanked. And so that's why, is, in my understanding, my opinion, that it happened, that it didn't happen. Why none of these were, the residential lots weren't rezoned or anything, because nobody was coming in. Now, everybody wants to be here. We need our two, because we don't have any that I'm aware of. And it's, it's a good zoning for commercial. You got the, yeah.
Well, Chair Goss, Commissioner Sixta, I certainly hope that that's the case. What I remember about that road growing up is it's a wash. Like, you, and they've improved it, but basically you drive down the road, and there's a ditch in the middle, and there's, it fills up with water. Again, there's like sparse, very sparse commercial, which maybe we're addressing here. And then there's a school, school zone that just impedes using it functionally. You know, you get pulled over by cop if you try and drive down it a little too fast, so. I've just seen a lot of problems with that road. There's not many alternatives to Stockton Hill Road. Hopefully, the city can make it work, and I'm rooting for them, hopefully. Thank you, Chair.
Alright, so just to circle back, does anybody have any other comments about whether or not we should change this to C2 or not?
I have one more question to staff, if I may.
Yeah.
South of Kino is zoned what, for the most part? Because you're not addressing south of Kino on Bank.
Certainly. Chair Goss, Commissioner McCoy, the properties located south of Kino on Bank are zone C3 and C2. That's existing, correct?
All of those?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Alright, what do we think? Any more conversation, or are we ready for motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve Bank Street Rezone, case number RZ24-0003.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Second.
Chair Goss?
Chair Goss, approve.
Vice Chair Swop? Yes. Commissioner Sixta?
You next. Just say it. Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
All right, the motion is approved. All right, next we have the Delmonico rezon, case number RZ24-0004. This is a request to rezon approximately 1.8 acres from the R-16 residential, single family, 6,000 square foot minimum lot size zone and C-1 neighborhood convenience zone to C2 community business zone located at the northeast corner of North Stockton Hill Road and Florence Avenue and south of Robinson Avenue. County Assessor's parcel number 311-14-197G and 311-14-190C. Applicant Summer and Daniel Delmonico of Delmonico Real Estate LLC. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm presenting zone change request case RZ24-0004. Applicant Summer and Daniel Delmonico. The requested action is a zone change of approximately 1.18 acres from an R16 residential, single family, 6,000 square foot minimum lot size zone and a C1 neighborhood convenience zone to a C2 community business zone to unify zoning across the site and allow for a custodial care facility. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Florence Avenue and Stockton Hill Road and can be further described as Assessor's parcel numbers 311-14-197G and 311-14-190C. Some general information, the property owner, Delmonico Real Estate LLC, applicant Summer and Daniel Delmonico. The current zoning, R16, C1 and C2, asking to change to C2. Here's an aerial view of the site. You can see that there's currently some existing buildings and parking located on the site. Here's the general plan map, which indicates the current general plan designation for a majority of the site is local commercial with medium density on a portion, and we were able to work through that internally without having to take that forward based on the requirements laid out in the new general plan. Here's a zoning and utilities map. As you can see, a portion of the site is zoned C1, C2 in the middle, and then R16 towards the right-hand side. We have utilities in Stockton Hill Road right-of-way, Robinson Avenue right-of-way, and Florence Avenue right-of-way, which the property has frontage on all three sides. The proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the goals of the general plan and any applicable specific plans. The subject property is currently designated as local commercial with the exception of medium density residential in the northeastern portion of APN 311-14-190C. There is a companion case, GP240001, being processed administratively that will change the medium density residential designation to local commercial on the Kingman General Plan 2040 projected land use map. The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience or welfare of the city and will add to the public good as described in the general plan. The zone change will encourage infill development to occur on the overall site. Encouraging infill development is also an objective of the growth area element, which seeks to promote the most cost-efficient and logical expansion of public services and infrastructure. This will add to the public good as described in the general plan. Furthermore, the proposed development will facilitate improvements to the existing sidewalk and street network, which would allow citizens in the neighborhood several transportation options to access the existing and expanded businesses such as vehicle, bicycle and walking. The affected site is physically suitable in terms of design, locations, shape, size, operating characteristics, and the provision of public emergency vehicle access, public services and utilities to ensure that the requested zone designation and proposed or anticipated uses and/or development will not endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard to the property or improvements in the vicinity in which the property is located. The site is physically suitable for development as either multifamily or commercial, as the site is relatively flat and has access to an improved street system and access to city water and sanitary sewer infrastructure. Site development will occur through the city's permitting process where any proposed development would be scrutinized to ensure adherence to various standards designed for safety and for compatibility with adjacent properties. Therefore, it is not anticipated that any additional development on the subject site will endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard to the property or improvements in the vicinity. The site was posted with, in public notice post, published in the Kingman Daily Miner and letters to property owners within 300 feet were sent by mail. As of this date, staff has received no comments from the public. City and outside agencies' comments were addressed in the staff report. The recommendation, based on the submitted application and public outreach, staff analysis was able to find that the proposed amendment to the zoning map complies with the required criteria of the Kingman zoning code, section 2-50.010C5. Therefore, planning staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the request to change the zoning of the subject property from residential, single family, 6,000 square foot minimum lot size and commercial neighborhood convenience to commercial community business, C2. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for staff?
Chair, yeah, just really quick. I don't have my manual in front of me, but the community business zone, it's a, it's a lot of different types of businesses, right? I mean, like, talking family dollar to bank, it's a pretty broad category. And we won't know until later on when we actually get a little closer to the project being implemented, right?
They're aiming to open a custodial care facility in the existing buildings. They did propose an expansion of one of those buildings for the custodial care facility, but I think that that's something that's still in the works and they're not committed to at this point.
Yeah, we won't have any elevations or anything like that.
Right.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Any more questions? No? All right, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, this item is also requiring a public hearing, so I will open this up for public comment. If you have a comment, please approach the podium and state your name.
So my name is Daniel Delmonico. I own a property with my life. We are, we currently have a lease with a company that's going to run a custodial care facility for kids. We're going to expand to the west side of the property, 2,000 feet. All of it's compliant with the current zoning. We're just using this to clean up the zoning that's currently in place. So realistically, and I'll honestly wait to talk to Jason afterwards, we've got building plans came in today, not quite finalized, but they should be pretty quick to get to the city so we can start construction of, of the build-out and get them moving. Target date for them is September 1st, and they'll operate 16-bed facility in the, in the Westerly Building with some conference room and learning centers and on the Esterly Building, I think there's an eight-bed facility there with additional conference rooms and learning facilities. So I don't know if that answers your question, but give you a little bit of color.
Chair, yeah, I, I just was wondering how committed you truly were to doing the custodial care facility, you know?
I'm not. I'm not, so I'm not. So the company that does it, I guess it's, it's out there. It's called Community Bridges. They're pretty large. They've got 20 facilities in Arizona. They've got some in Oklahoma, one in Washington State. That's what they do. I mean, they generate probably 150 million a year in revenue and 50 million in assets. So they're a pretty large company. They've committed to about a million and a half into the facility, plus we're putting in another, probably, we're going to be in probably a million two out of our pocket. So there's a substantial investment going into that.
Okay, yeah, to answer your question, that, I was just concerned another family dollar might be like, we, we get it rezoned and then we get a family dollar. You remember the Dollar Generals when people were tearing their hair out?
Been here for long enough that we don't, I don't, don't need another one of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any more public comments? No?
I'd like to.
One second, I have to close public comment before we start. So, all right, let me close public comment and open up commission discussion. Thank you. Now you can go ahead.
What custody, is that overnight, is there?
So that's probably a question for him. So I'm going to bring you back up.
So, yeah, we'll have overnight stay there is what it is. So basically, what their model is, is for, for children that have a variety of issues. Honestly, they, they oversee the whole gamut, so they've got adult to, there's, this isn't just one portion. So they've got about six or eight different care facility, you know, uses. But what it is, is for kids maybe with drug dependencies, kids that are in a foster situation, kids that are into a scenario where the state maybe take, take, takes control, I don't, I don't know what the term is. And so they're currently operating with a contract with Mojave County. They have been for a number of years. They don't have a facility in Mojave County, so all the kids that are in this scenario are being shipped to, to Phoenix, to, to other Prescott, to other facilities and not with, staying within our community. And when I say our community, it's Kingman Bullhead Havasu. So it's, it's not just here that'll be housed in, in this unit. So it's, there, there's a lot more of that dynamic that's trying to keep it local. They like the setting of it. They feel it's a little bit more neighborhood. It is an ancient building. There's some arches in there. The proposal initially was to remove all that. They're like, no, no, we don't want that. We want some closure and, and to keep that neighborhood feel. So that's what it is. The kids aren't going to live there. How long, I couldn't tell you, but we're planning for overnight stay in the.
That sounds wonderful. I commend you for jumping in.
Thank you. It's been a road, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right.
I hate to, sorry, Chair, I hate to display my ignorance, but I, I assumed a custodial facility was for like an old folks home, you know? And so my question is, me being dumb on this and having read the planning code, did the public know what this, this facility is? Like, I know the notices are pretty generic. Do they know that there's going to be people, like potentially kids that are in trouble living here next to these residences?
Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, so before you tonight is the rezon. So the actual C2 designation, not the actual use itself.
Yeah, I understand.
The C2 designation does allow for custodial facilities. Custodial facilities does not differentiate between whether being its adult, so in, in your case, a assisted living facility versus that for children. So the direct response to the question is, no notice was given regarding the type of use because it wasn't before us for this application.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, I know it's early, yeah, I don't know. I could just see some discussion about it if, if people are living right next to this. But again, you know, this last one, we didn't have anybody show up, so that's my only comment.
I know, I know that this is not what we're discussing, but just maybe to allay your fears a little bit. A lot of children who go into foster care in Mojave County end up not only leaving their homes, but also leaving their schools and county and are, they're sent to, most of them are sent to Maricopa County or Tucson. So I, from what I understand, a lot of this would be for foster children who, from no fault of their own, find themselves basically as immigrants, but they would be able to stay in our county and in their schools and in their sports and with their teachers. It's a huge, it's probably the biggest need that we have in the dependency program in Mojave County right now, is to keep our children in county.
Thank you.
And I'll just also put this out there that unfortunately, some of the responsibility for deciding whether or not people want things in their community has to fall on the people themselves who decide not to go to the meetings or write back to the notices. So I will just put that out there publicly on our YouTube channel, that if you are a citizen and you get a notice, you might want to look into that because, you know, it is on them to be involved in the notices that get sent out. So that definitely needs to happen more often, as evidenced by our empty chairs 99.9% of the time.
That's true.
But anybody else have moment? No?
I'll make a motion to approve Delmonico rezon, case number RZ24-00004.
A second?
A motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Goss?
Approved.
Commissioner Sixta?
Approved.
Vice Chair Swop?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Approved.
Motion carries. All right, last we have a zone text amendment, admin complete, SB1162, dash case number Z02, or ZO24-0003. This is a staff-initiated amendment, amendment to the City of Kingman zoning code to specifically amend section 2-30.020, application process to establish defined review times for deeming a zoning application administratively complete in accordance with Senate Bill 1162.
Before you tonight is zone code, zoning code text amendment ZO24-0003. And this is actually a state legislative mandated amendment that's coming before you this evening and is to address our administrative completeness requirements within our code. Administrative completeness requirements is the first phase for a developer when they come before the planning and, the planning department or the development services department in which we get the opportunity to look to see if their application is actually fully deemed complete so we can route it and get comments back. The state of Arizona has adopted really the, the one bite at the apple type concept. So if we don't deem it, or if we were to deem it complete and then we come back with multiple rounds of different comments and, and a second review or a third review, it, it puts the, the city in the position of which we just don't want to be there. We want to be able to make sure that we're giving our complete comments at first review. So I'll just kind of quickly go through this. It does amend section 2-30-020, the application process, which determines, which currently does have a determination of administrative completeness for both administrative completeness and substantive review. And then it also amend section 2.50, 020, zoning change specifically, this amendment also requires that there be certain actions taken when any time a zoning amendment is being proposed. So the purpose again tonight is really to comply with Senate Bill SB1162, requires municipalities within the state of Arizona adopting ordinance establishing a timeline for determination for administrative completeness for residential zoning applications. It updates the code to establish a timeline for determination administrative completeness for, for residential zoning or rezoning applications and assess forth the procedures that must be followed by the city council. The administrative complete section, so application process determination, this currently provides a process for determination of the administrative completeness but without a required timeline. Provides for the director to distribute the applications for different, to the different departments, review administrative completeness and requires the director to notify the applicant of an application is incomplete or to return the, is it complete or return the actual application for additional required information. So this goes back to that one bite at the apple. So ultimately, is what it does is it amends to include the requirement that we have to deem, or we have to be able to give them an administrative completeness review and determine to be complete within 30 days from the date that they submit their application. Within that 30 days, if it is not deemed complete, we do have to give them the list of requirements to deem it complete. And then it falls back upon the applicant, applicant to come back and resubmit. That's the second part of this, where it further states that upon the issuance of the written notice, the review timeframe is suspended. So we'll, we pick that back up when they come back in with their resubmital. And at that time, staff has 15 days to actually review that, that resubmital to deem it now complete. And again, if it's not complete at that point in time, it goes back, it suspends that, that timeline until they come back again. And then the other part of this is it requires the application be, to be complete by staff and council, is required to either approve or deny the application when it's associated with the rezon within 180 days of, of the application coming before them or from their actual submittal. And this is really designed to keep the housing opportunities moving forward with the state. That's why this, this particular Senate bill was, was derived. The, it was a negotiation between the League of Cities back at, back in 2023 and 2024 to encourage applications and rezons to be heard and not tabled indefinitely. Staff has analyzed the amendments, proposed amendments are, to clarify the existing code, it is consistent with SB1162 and it does provide a, a prescribed timeline for the council to take action once the application is deemed complete. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I know that, it sounds like you're going to do the whole thing.
Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, so, as it goes back to the applicant, it is incumbent upon the applicant, so they do not have a deemed complete application until it comes in, and that's what really starts our timeline, so as we go through those first few submittals or reviews, if they're coming in, if it's not deemed complete, it does not start their timeline, it goes back on pause. When they come back in the second time, we'll have fifteen days to look at it, if it's deemed complete then, then we're now under the timeline to act and move that application forward. So, it isn't until it's actually deemed complete that we have the burden to move the project forward. I can tell you historically, I've done a study, not particularly this city, but at another jurisdiction in Arizona, the, the planning and zoning department held an application for ninety-three days, however, the applicant held it for two hundred and sixty-seven. That was the average.
Can you just turn your microphone on?
I'll never forget that. Yeah, sorry, I'm just looking out for you guys, because it seems like it's a one-directional thing, I've seen a flurry of these sort of, you know, you're, you're kind of assuaging the, the developer community lately, and I understand it's coming top-down, being forced down upon us, it could be fair, you know, like, it, it could be reciprocal in a way, maybe they could not drag their feet and, and make some of these applications stretch out for years, and we have to renew CUPs that were issued four years ago or whatever, that's happened quite a bit on this board, so, Commission, so anyway, thank you.
If I can add, Chair Goss, Commissioners, this, this was a compromise between the League of Cities, the legislative representatives that represent the city, the cities at large back before the Senate, and what they were looking for at that time was to impose zoning by rights, so, which would take away the ability for the city to control its local zoning, so this, this was, what we would consider as much as fair as possible still retains local control.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Fifteen days, is that calendar or working?
Just so I speak correctly, it is not listed here, but we count everything as calendar day, or working days, business days.
So, the one eighty would also be working days?
I will confirm it for you, but I want to say that it is working days. Carl, do you remember?
What kind of projects are these for, like, just a house submittal?
So, all zoning applications, so, any planning, planning zoning application that comes before the body for any type of approval, so before Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately the city council.
So, I may have missed it, but listening to Commissioner Waters, it sounds like an applicant submits, staff has thirty days to determine administrative completeness, and then, if it's not, then the applicant has thirty days to respond?
The applicant has as long as they want, it pauses the timeline at that point, when the applicant comes back and submits for their second bite at that apple, or the second time that they submit, staff now has fifteen days to, to review, to deem it complete.
So, there's no, I guess my, so, when I deal with administrative completeness, it's, you know, for subdivisions, waters, sewer lines, submittals, and that's ten days for flats and so forth.
So, Commissioner Goss, Chairman Noble, the difference would be, are they entitlement actions, so, actions that are coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's what this is referring to, as opposed to plan review actions, which are ministerial.
All right, thank you.
If I can add, I can tell you it's the direction of my department, and working with our engineering department is to improve our timelines and actually beat them well, well above than what the state legislature requires.
It does look like it's saying working days, though.
Working, is what it seems. Including the one eighty as well?
It, it's what it's saying, it defines it as working days, but I haven't gotten to the one eighty yet, but I just wanted to let you know.
What, what is, what have your timeframes been so far, do you know?
Chair Goss and Chairman Noble, if I were to take a guess today, because I haven't had very many applications that I've had the opportunity to start with, but I can probably start with the rezones that are before you to, tonight, those are two applications that I personally had met with the applicants, my staff has been working on, and we were able to bring those forward within being deemed administratively complete and moving those applications forward, and we did that within about sixty days, so.
So, administrative complete and, and the submittal to be in Z.
Correct, so, and again, the timeline is a hundred and eighty days.
So, I guess people are going for, you think this is doable, right?
Chair Goss, Commissioner, I, I do believe the hundred and eighty days gives staff plenty of time to move these applications forward, I can tell you, in my previous life, we moved applications forward within sixty to a hundred and twenty days, so, that's well below the hundred and eighty day requirement.
Great, thank you.
Chair Goss, one more question, will this, we just recently had an emergency meeting basically right before Thanksgiving, the day before, you know, I mean, is this going to, conceivably, thirty days, business days, I could see necessitating, you know, like, are us bending over backwards to make these meetings in time, in some cases where the public doesn't have a chance to, you know, to put their two cents in, basically, so, do you anticipate that having any sort of effect like that, where we have to have an emergency meeting before a city council meeting, because this deadline that's being imposed from top-down?
Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, so, again, these timelines are part and part for administrative completeness, that is all at the front end of an application process. Once we get beyond that, then staff has a hundred and eighty days to bring it before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to take action. If we fail to bring it before at that time, it is actually deemed complete as well as approved.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Jason? No? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, this is also a public hearing item, so I'm going to open this up to public comment, if anybody has a comment, please approach the podium and state your name. I see none, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for commission discussion. Does anybody have anything to say?
Yes.
Or should we just make a motion?
That seems positive.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve SB one, is it on, SB one one six two, case number Z zero two four dash zero 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 three. Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Goss?
Approved.
Vice Chair Swop?
Yes.
Commissioner Sixta?
Approved.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
All right, that's approved. Next, we have announcement by commission members, this is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for report from staff, no discussion on any of these items. Does anybody have anything that they would like studied further?
Yeah, Chair Goss, I'd just like to suggest that the traffic study weigh in the possible, the possibility of additional, additional school crossings on Bank Street when they do the traffic study, and if that'll have any impact on this new commercial zone expansion down Bank Street, thank you.
Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, we do have a presentation tutorial coming back at the February meeting, that's already addressing traffic concerns, that was requested by the commission from the last meeting itself, dealing with traffic impact analysis and so forth, so I'll have the engineer look at that as well, and at least provide you the, the background on it.
Great, thank you, thank you Chair.
Great, thank you. Any further announcements? No? Okay, and then, do we have any requests for future agenda items or updates in any other form? I will just say, congratulations on your new vice chairship. All right, well, thank you guys for coming, yeah?
If I can, Chair Goss, Commissioners, I'd like just to take a moment to introduce to you one of our newest planners, that started with us this week, Heather Rasmussen joins us from the city of Phoenix from the last five years, prior to that, the city of Lancaster out of California, she comes with about eighteen years of municipal experience, mostly in economic development, but that does closely align with our planning goals and what we do in the planning department, so, we're excited to have her with us tonight, and so you'll start seeing more of her at, at these meetings and as cases come about.
Great, thank you so much, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Crew, this meeting is adjourned.